Call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Heisler.
Here.
Minzler.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Rudgewitz.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Anthony.
Here.
Davidson.
Here.
Selssman.
Here.
Hayton.
Here.
Cybert.
Here.
White.
Here.
Gilletti.
Here.
Musgrove.
Here.
Orland.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
All sixteen Aldermen present, roll call of Department Heads.
Police Chief Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Lexon.
He's on vacation, but note that Deputy Chief Tom Forrest is in his place.
City Attorney Garrett Porter.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Bryce Carlyle. Jamie Matrit.
Here.
Tim Gregwitz. Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Speerman.
Here.
Emily Foltz.
Here.
Chuck Shaffer.
Here.
Um Sabo.
Here.
Debbie Velvall.
Velvall and Bryce Carlyle are excused. Is there missing one, gentlemen? Oh, Tim Gregwitz is also excused. He was ill today. Uh, he and Royce is dismissed today. Uh, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, we have Boy Scout Troop One. Judge, should I represent you?
She's still in the office, yeah.
Okay. Would some of the boys like to come forward, ladies and the pledge?
There you are.
Uh, it's a shame. No, no. Thank you, gentlemen. I guess, uh, first they're working on citizenship in the community, or?
Yeah, citizenship this month, if we're doing citizenship, so. We're here.
We're always glad to have the Boy Scouts. Um, this time, the, uh, I will open, uh, there's no public hearing, I will open public participation. I would ask that you have to recognize that you, uh, step up to the microphone, give your name and address, and try to keep your comments to two or three minutes. Anyone this evening like to guess?
Michael Hecker, 701 Centerville. Once again, I'd like to remind the city that we're paying forty-two thousand dollars for a website, and this website will not do the citizens any good whatsoever if we don't post data to it. We, uh, went through the holiday season, and we didn't post any agendas until mid-morning for this evening's meetings. State law requires forty-eight hour notice. Uh, we can't use the excuse that it was a holiday, the state does not allow exceptions for holidays. I'll also say that on that website, we are blocking any other search engines from searching the data and making it easily available to us. And the search function on the website does not work, and I commented on it, and it has not yet been fixed. We need a site that comes and delivers what they promised when we got it. We've gotta go back and review those documents and say, uphold your end of the bargain, make it a useful site. As far as the other stuff, we've got a library bid that showed up on the agenda tonight. It was never posted on the website either. We have the website, we have to use it, if we don't use it, it was a waste of money. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rick Brown, uh, 125 UCLA in Shiloh. So I guess you guys are gonna change the rules up here for public participation. Can't take the criticism, can you? You poor babies. You know, criticism comes with being a politician. And our founding fathers, our forefathers, and our soldiers spilt blood so that we, the people, can address you. And sometimes it's not pretty. Now, you have to be civil to yourself, regardless rules of order takes care of that. You know, we try to be civil, but you, you want us to try to sugarcoat what we're trying to ask you? You know, you want us to sugarcoat? How do you sugarcoat when sometimes our property is stolen by this group? How do you sugarcoat, you know, when our freedoms are taken away, like the freedom of speech by this group? How do you sugarcoat policies that racially discriminate against minorities in Belleville? In hiring? We've got seven point seven percent minorities working for the city of Belleville, yet we've got a much larger minority population. The crime-free housing ordinance targets, I mean bullseyes, seventy-three percent minorities. How, there's no way to sugarcoat that stuff. You know, how do you sugarcoat the destruction of legal documents when they're asked for under the Freedom of Information Act? Illegally destroying those documents. You know, you just, you guys can't take three minutes? Three minutes of us speaking our minds? And maybe sometimes it isn't pretty? You know, one man's civility is another man's censure. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir, the head of the room.
Mr. Lander, uh, three eighteen South Twenty-Nine Street, Belleville. I wanted to kind of go this way tonight, but I pictured the, uh, I'm gonna say, uh, courtroom, uh, uh, what is civility and what is uncivility? I think it's common on uncivility, where the politicians in Belleville and this county are just wasting the taxpayer's money. That is what I call incivility, uh, criminal waste of taxpayer's money. And the citizens of St. Clair County are rather a very civil bunch of people, if not a good thing these politicians with that tarred and feathered run out of town a long time ago. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the body? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Mary McHugh, ten five oh three West Main, down in West Billow. Uh, many thanks to Jacqueline, uh, the reporter from the New Democrat, for the excellent article on civility. Thank you, Jacqueline. The good book has given us words to live by. Do unto others as you would have to do unto you. Turn the other cheek if necessary. Love thy neighbor as yourself. Many of us in Quinney have forgotten how to use those words, I think. What has happened to us? We have been, um, kind of on the side track away from the rule. Working together, we can boost Belleville, our all-American city, to gather great heights through that image that President Kennedy had envisioned, where all skies are endless, all possibilities are open, all things beautiful. The Basic Initiative is a driving force in this endeavor. And if you are not well-educated in the Basic Initiative, I suggest that you see Jim Schneider quickly. We are entering a new era of two hundred years for our great day. We are already on a roll, so let's just beat up the work. Thank you very much.
If there's no one else from the party, then I'm going to close public participation. Alderman Schneider, the United Party.
Yes. Willie Schneider, Alderman at large, two nineteen Kansas Avenue, Belleville, Illinois. I want to publicly submit a FOIA. On Friday afternoon, this was when we did the park walk, while reviewing the status of the Bicentennial Park, I asked Debbie Velvall why I hadn't received my requested monthly update on the dog park revenue. Ms. Velvall informed me that I would have to file a FOIA each and every month to request the information. She also stated that I, as an Alderman, would not be allowed to view the individual names and addresses of the citizens who have been issued access cards. Each and every time I have filled out a FOIA during a city council meeting, you've stated, Mayor, that Aldermen do not have to file FOIs. Yet here, a department head working directly under your supervision is refusing to release information unless I repeatedly file FOIs each and every month. Can you please clarify your position on whether or not Aldermen are required to file FOIs when requesting information? FOIA laws allow the redaction of personal information when information is requested from the general public. It is my belief that as an elected city official, this information should not be re-adopted. I have been in contact with Illinois Attorney General's Office and been providing the following reference, and Oberman versus Bryan, nineteen eighty-three, one-one-two, Illinois, A P P third, one-five-five, one-six-four dash sixty-five. The appellate court constructed a city ordinance which required all city departments to permit examination of all their official records by any member of the city council. At this time, I am requesting that the Director of the Parks Department release monthly revenue figures to, to the finance department so they can create a Parks Department revenue spreadsheet to be included in their monthly revenue report. I would also like to inform the Parks Department that I should, or any member of the city council, wish to have access to the list of citizens who have been issued access cards. We'd be granted so without hesitation. I sent this email to you, Mayor, and I did not get a response.
And when did you send that?
I sent, I sent it on Sunday, November seventeenth. I know you wouldn't read it on Sunday, but you would've read it on Monday. And I-
And we'll, uh, Debbie Velvall is excused today, she was off today, and I will talk to her. Garrett, we did, just so the public knows, your original request got, got all filled.
And it said, I wanted it monthly till April two thousand fifteen.
And I also told you that, yes, as an Alderman, you do not have to fill out a FOIA, but you told me you insisted that you would fill out a FOIA, and, and I think Debbie knew that you-
Well, this is the third one.
But, but she knew that you made it up. I think the biggest thing is, we talked about, and Garrett was looking into it, there's animals on here, and, and, you know, and there's breeds, and there's names, and there's stuff that, I don't know if you want that responsibility, if that would get out and we release it, the city could have-
They do it just like they do the public, take the names off.
Well, and that's what I think they did for you the first time.
But I've asked for, this is the third time, I've received it once, and that's it. But my main concern is, I sent you an email, and I had no correspondence from it.
Well, I'm gonna be honest with you, you know, my, as you know, my assistant was out for over a week with a broken foot, and also, um, you know, I'm still trying to find a, a permanent second person. The office has been crazy with messages and emails, and, and we're, we're short of staff.
Well, who's reading?
Why don't you pick up the phone and call me? You have my cellphone.
Who's reading them? Because you answered, did you read it?
I did, I did read it, I did read it, yes, but getting back and following up, the email stack is a mile long. If you'd call me, we can work through this, and I think Garrett was researching, uh, the other stuff. I mean, you don't have to have a FOIA. You're the one who told us you insisted on writing FOIs.
Well, this is why I did it publicly, so it would be-
Well, and that's fine, you, you like to do that, that's fine, but it's just a phone call, it's a conversation, and we can clear this up.
Okay, I want it monthly, from now until April two thousand fifteen.
That's a lot, I'm not saying we can't, won't do it, but I'm just saying, if every Alderman starts to demand a monthly statement on all these different projects, staff is, is really, you know, it's, it's really getting unique. Um, anyway, okay, so, we'll close the council's part of public participation, and we'll go on to a, uh, an upbeat thing, I believe. This time, I'd like to invite Rita Eris to come forward, and she is from the Get Up and Go Committee, and she had, uh, has some good things to talk about, and has got some excitement, I think, so Rita, we'll turn it over to you.
Mayor Eckert, thank you, everyone, for inviting me to be here this evening. Wasn't sure where I was gonna speak from, so I guess the way is after microphone. I'm, um, representing Get Up and Go, which is a grassroots community organization dedicated to promoting health and wellness for the residents of St. Clair County. Our underlying philosophy is that people should have the right to choose how to behave, but if they choose to make healthy choices, we want to make that in the realm of possibility. We're mostly about promoting healthy eating and active living. And here's how these relationships line up, because you might not think of why it even makes sense to have communities talking about health and about things that individuals should be doing. Well, it turns out that, you know, most of us would probably agree that it's desirable to have healthy people. Healthy people lead more productive lives, uh, generally are more able to contribute, they live longer, and that's a goal that most of us would endorse. Healthy behaviors help lead to healthy people, not the sole contributing factor, but an important factor. The environment, the health of the environment, and the way the conditions are set up so we can have those healthy behaviors is important, and that's all driven by healthy policies. So policies that help make it possible for us to have behaviors that lead to healthy lifestyles is what our logic is here. So we realize that communities do play an important role in the health of their citizens and residents, and we know that some of our communities have been really making extra efforts to set up those conditions so people can make those healthy choices, or not, but at least make it in the realm of possibility. So Get Up and Go, um, set out to recognize communities that we feel have done that part, because we feel it's, it's important to lead a good example for other communities, and, um, the areas that we were looking at, we have an application process, and Velvall submitted an application to talk about the things that you've done in the areas of healthy eating, active living, and worksite wellness for your employees, looking at policies, programs, and efforts to remove barriers, and then ask you about your aspirations for the future. So here's how it's stacked up. Velv, Velvall really demonstrated some strengths in passing the Complete Streets Policy, again, the underlying framework for healthy environment. Some of your outstanding achievements on your main street, streetscape, and other projects that you have underway, there's been a dramatic increase in the number of fitness events. Used to have one or two, we're now up to over thirty. Improvement in lengthening the trails and the interconnectivity of the trails, the Velvall Neighborhood Partnership is just outstanding because it gets people involved at the grassroots level, addition and improvements to the parks, and we have neighborhoods that are in fact meeting some of the Get Up and Go criteria. Strengths in the food environment, you have a farmer's market that's well-established, you've been supporting neighborhood efforts to have food cantries that are accessible to people in need, and helping to establish community gardens, and then some participation in the District one eighteen food drive. And worksite wellness, this is an area where you particularly shine, employing wellness programs, encouraging weight loss and walking in employees, wellness workshops, employing health fairs, creating workout areas for employees, and exercise equipment, discounted YMCA memberships, bicycles for people to get some exercise and learn some errands on the job. This has had some economic impact on your city, I understand, in decreasing some insurance costs and workman's comp claims, so there's multiple benefits. Future aspirations? You would like to continue to work on bikeability, walkability of the city, and just through efforts like Complete Streets and promoting safe routes to school? To continue to develop those neighborhood partnerships, and to develop more opportunities for people in neighborhoods to serve their neighborhoods and their fellow men? Focusing more on the food environment, and, uh, hopefully someday to have a city wellness center? And to do this is not to go it all alone, but through partnerships. Through partnerships is really the name of the game today, when money is so tight, you can't go it alone, you have to partner with others. Our recommendations as an organization, we are a five oh one C three led by a board, we had, uh, people who are pretty distinguished, couple members of our, um, Communities Committee are here tonight, Dr. Maureen Minzler, Dr. Roger Boyd, myself are part of that committee. Jim Schneider's also a part of that committee, but he, he obviously didn't review his own application. So our recommendations are to always start what you're undertaking with a solid assessment of the situation, to work with an establishment of priorities and goals, and then to take some time to evaluate, have you hit the target? Have you met your benchmarks? And to continue working through your neighborhoods, we just can't say enough about how outstanding that is. Work on the food environment, especially policies, and I don't have time to get into specifics, but if you wanted to hear them, we'd be happy to advise, and most of all, to keep up your good work. It really is very inspiring, and I have to tell you, I work with all the communities in the county, and the other communities really look to Belleville to take the lead in certain areas, so a good example is really critical. And we do sincerely thank you for your leadership, and I'm really happy to present this recognition from Get Up and Go to Belleville, the city of Belleville, as a Get Up and Go community.
We will display proudly.
All right, no, there are other perks to come, we're gonna get a banner, and if you wanna use that acclamation in any way on any of your city marketing materials, we're really proud to have you do that. Thank you.
You know, we have, Jamie, I think we just had a meeting last week, the, uh, workman's comp, last couple of years, this has really paid off with the, uh, the training and the safety classes and some of the, well, the Wellness Fair we had a year or two ago. Uh, these things have all made a difference, uh, firsthand for us, and they've had a reflection on saving money, but, uh, there's no doubt that people are talking about our trails, our connectedness, and, uh, we've come a long way in a short time. It's been good to be a part of this, and it's also very good to be recognized, uh, for the efforts that the city has made, so on behalf of the city, we appreciate Get Up and Go giving us this recognition, and, uh, it was nice to be one of the first cities that you all recognized, and we thank you, so, thanks for being here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? What do you mean by a city wellness?
I think I probably will refer that to some books that show that.
I think she probably referring to the plan someday of having a new community.
And I think as we talk a little bit, Jim, we're looking at partners, and it could be involved with the hospitals, it could be, and obviously it could be educational facilities, but we're looking, and we're, we're dreaming, and we're visiting, and we're, Jim and a group of them are, are educating themselves a lot, but it's gonna take time, but I think as the partnerships and the financial opportunities come, the grants or whatever, that's something that we see as a vision for the future, of course, money's always a big ticket, I just saw, but we're gonna continue to dream and work, because I think that's something that we all agree would be a big plus to our community.
Okay, we're gonna move on. The next item on the agenda is to each beginning of the month, to recognize the character word of the month, and this month in December, the word is empathy. Identifying, understanding others' feelings in order to get along better. Once again, I think it's been well pointed out that the character words, uh, and recently, I should say, just, what was it, just a week or two ago, the Character Dinner was another great success. Jim was at the sixth one. Uh, they keep doing better. It's wonderful to recognize, uh, so many unsung heroes, and it's wonderful to see our youth involved. The speaker this year was fabulous, and it was just, it was a well-tended, outstanding event, and those character words are important to all of us. The next thing I'd like to do, just for a moment, because of the significance of this, is to read a proclamation, uh, and, and to, um, National Drunk and Drug Driving Three-D Prevention Month, December two thousand thirteen. Whereas motor vehicle crashes killed nine hundred and fifty-six people in Illinois during two thousand twelve, and whereas hundreds of those deaths involve a driver impaired by alcohol or drugs, and whereas the December holiday season is traditionally one of the most deadly times of the year for impaired driving, and whereas for thousands of families across the state and the nation, holidays are a time to remember loved ones lost, and whereas organizations across the state and the nation are joined with the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over and other campaigns that foster public awareness of the dangers of impaired driving and anti-impaired driving law enforcement efforts. And whereas the community of Belleville, Illinois is proud to partner with the Illinois Department of Transportation's Division of Traffic Safety and other traffic safety groups in that effort to make our roads and streets safer. Now therefore, I'm Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the city of Belleville, to hereby proclaim December two thousand thirteen as Drunk and Drug Driving Three-D Prevention Month in Belleville, and to hereby call upon all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals and healthcare providers, schools and public and private institutions, to promote awareness of the impaired driving problem, to support program, programs and policies to reduce the incidence of impaired driving, and to promote safer and healthier behaviors regarding the use of alcohol and other drugs this December holiday season and throughout the year. This, I felt, was very important, uh, as so many topics are, but I felt that, we know it continues to be a serious problem, uh, and I did, when it was then asked by, I thought that I would read this at this meeting, I think it's a, a good reminder for all of us that we talk to our family and friends and, and make sure that people realize the importance and the dangers that go with being impaired driver, and our loved ones can be the ones greatly affected and least expected. This time, we go into the regular part of the meeting. We had the regular, the minutes of the, of the last, um, meeting, uh, I guess it was the last of the council, we don't have the date on here, but I can remember meeting before here. Uh, do I hear a motion or comments?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion to receive and file the city council meeting minutes of November eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, so moved, Your Honor.
Motion, Alderman Heisler, here second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion.
Yes, um, Alderman Schmidt made a motion seconded by Alderman Heisler to approve the town's here as a public member now need for the joint review board annual meeting for all active TIP districts to be held Friday, December twentieth, two thousand thirteen. Members voting yea, a, they got us down, it's all of them, and then you got, members voting nay was Paul, Kate, Gilletti, and Schneider, which was right, but in the first part, you got all.
Oh, I see, I just put that wrong, but it's, it's recorded correctly though, right? But on the other page, like you said.
Oh, I haven't listened to the recording, but as in the minutes, what's printed, it's printed wrong.
Sure.
It needs to be-
But I'm saying the parentheses are tall correctly though, the nays aren't correct, right?
Yeah, but you have it-
Right, it's, it's wrong. Okay, you may move on. Right, we'll fix that.
Okay, with that, with that correction, yes, sir, yeah, I'm sorry, um, Alderman, so we will-
I was gonna say, at the, at the top of page six, um, the very first one, the first one, which is an Alderman's name missing, the first sentence, I think it was Alderman Hayton, uh, why this, talking about the transfer of, getting rid of that chip per count, that's correct.
Okay, so we're missing the name there?
Yeah, but, but he's gone, uh, and then it should, to make the sentence better, Alderman Hayton asked why we are doing this, sort of put a period there, and then scratch out the next word, and then just start with Jamie Matrit, say it was open when, then paid off would be a period, and then start with, that's the old English. And then one other, one other one? Yeah, question. Then on the fourth section down, second paragraph, it says, "The districts ask for the meeting to be held during the, it should be gay instead of a." Thank you.
Good question. Alderman Conso, do you have your hand?
Yes, sir, I would like to call everybody's attention to the bottom of page one, the last line, and it starts to nibble that last line. Mr. Lander, it's referred to, Mr. Lander's is coming. Mr. Lander grabbed a small portion of a newspaper article inferring Lindenwood's involvement in John Bruff's injury. I don't recall that. Can anybody- Can anybody clarify that for me?
I think what he was.
Yes, ma'am.
I think what he was referring to, because that's when Alder's, I may be wrong, Alderman Davidson stopped him, he was going to refer to about the pictures I had in Alderman Davidson, that's when they were supposed to be civil and stuff like that, he stopped.
Civil's good.
Yes, I think.
Hold it, hold it.
I think what that was, was that Mr. Lambert inferred that somehow Lyndon Woods was involved because he bought the house that the officer was just, and now that house belongs to Lyndon Woods and somehow it was some kind of. Could I, could I ask that word involvement be changed to purchase, inferring or not inferring stating that Lyndon Woods purchased a house compared to Bruff's?
Well, it wasn't a house.
Yes, he'll.
It was a house that the shooter had some financial interest in.
The shooter didn't live right next to Old Bell West High School.
This seems to sound as if they're stating that Lyndon Woods was responsible.
Right. Now, see, that's the question. That's pretty much what he had said, but, you know, whether or not what he said is valid is a whole other matter. People are going to have to read it as such. We could go back and review and try and make it as close to verbatim as possible. Good point.
I would suggest that we improve the minutes tonight with the exception that that paragraph was reviewed by the tape and cleaned up since it is a rather, and I thought about the time, I forgot about it, it was pointed out to you today. It's a pretty strong statement that doesn't appear maybe to be totally accurate as to the statement. We need to check. Anything else besides those, those we know that, yes, ma'am?
If you look at the bottom of page six to the top of page seven, some people forgot to vote yes and no on this statement. That's what I was saying.
Right, right, that's.
Okay.
You were right, you were wrong.
Okay, and in the middle of page five, where we talked about putting on the agenda, discussing the Art of the Square building, have that input on the finance committee?
I talked to Jamie today. We're going to suggest it's in January, on the committee meeting in January, because I have been unable, and will be for a number of days yet, to meet with any committee members from Art of the Square to ask questions. They do have stuff they want to share with us. Basic phone call told me they have quite a bit of documentation of what they've done to better explain things, so we're going to, we're going to shoot to put that on the January financial, uh, agenda. So with those, with those comments and with these review of that one paragraph pertaining to the statement by Stuart Leonard, we have a motion to second, and you two have made the motion to second agreeing to those changes, the punctuation and the other comments. We have a motion to second to approve the minutes from November 18th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Plans payroll to persons.
Make a motion to pay the plane's payroll to persons, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consolo.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewiss.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cyber.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye. Motion carries. This time we have zoning board appeals, advisory reports. So I will work with the board. Number one.
Case number 55, November 13th, David Rhodes, Walking By Faith, requesting a use variance in order to operate a church at 7302 Westfield Plaza Drive located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district.
Your Honor, I approve that we accept the recommendation of the zoning board and the two of the ability to open the church.
And have the proper ordinance drawn.
And have the ordinance.
Motion by Alderman Musgrove, second by Alderman Orland. Discussion. All in favor of approving this recommendation and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Number two, case number 56, November 13th, Specialty Distributing of Illinois, requesting a special use permit in order to operate a wholesale business at 12 North 30th Street located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district.
Yeah, motion by Alderman Ridgewiss, second by Alderman Randall, to approve case number 56, and have the proper ordinance drawn. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, have the proper ordinance drawn for case 56, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Folks, they will, I believe the ordinance is on here, right, Jamie?
Yes, all the ordinances except.
The one.
Number 58 are on here.
Okay, so folks, if you, if you did want to stick around to get the final, the ordinance will be on in a few minutes, okay? Just too much of the bug out in that here to answer the question.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Number three.
Number three.
Case number 57, November 13th, Rural Ventures Enterprises Rural Storage, requesting a special use permit in order to expand the existing storage business at 2003 Mascota Avenue located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district.
Alderman White?
Make a motion to approve the zoning board recommendation, have the proper ordinance drawn. I'll send your.
Motion by Alderman White, second by Alderman Simon aboard six, to approve the zoning board's recommendation, have the proper ordinance drawn. Any discussion? All in favor of case number 57, have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Number four, case number 58, November 13th, Hassan Hamdan Sammy, requesting a use variance in order to operate a convenience store at 528 North Douglas Avenue located in A1 Single Family Zoning District.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
This is located right at the edge of Ward one and Ward two. At the zoning meeting, we had a great discussion about the alcohol, sale of alcohol at this location, and we were told by the attorney that that is a separate question that will be answered if they apply for a license. And I'd like to go on record tonight saying that we are adamant, opposed to any alcohol being sold at that location. So they claim that they're not asking for it this time, but that's something I'd like to be very adamant about.
So we have a motion to approve the original, the original request.
And I will second that motion.
Was that a motion, is that a motion, Alderman Consolo, to approve the zoning board's request?
I'd rather not make that motion myself. I'd rather leave it up to somebody else because, yes, I would.
Okay, so do we have a motion, someone willing to make the motion to approve case number 58 as a convenience store?
Does not, how many are motion to table this? I had a short discussion with the Assistant City Attorney about this specific case, and he indicated that on there, it was, there was a place on the form where it said, is this problem of your own making, and they didn't check yes. So until we can get some further assistance from him, I might just take it off. I would second Alderman Heisler.
Alderman Schneider.
I wasn't in the conversation. Kind of neighbors wanted this.
Well, we, we have a motion right now to table, so instead of getting into great discussion, first of all, let's vote on the motion to table. To table to the next council meeting?
Whenever we have the chance for Brian Flynn to look it over and give us some more advice.
So this will be to the 16th of December.
If he's able to do it.
So if he's able to give us some additional input. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to table case number 58 for approximately two weeks, or until the city Assistant City Attorney can render some advice on that occasion. Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. It goes table for at least two weeks. Case number 59.
Number five, case number 59, November 13th, Kingdom Life Worship Church, requesting a use variance in order to operate a church at 9720 West Main Street located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district.
We have a motion by Alderman Schmidt, is that right? Who's willing to make a second? Anybody with a second? Second by Alderman Anthony. Do we have any discussion? And this was approved by the zoning board, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second to approve case number 59 and have the proper ordinance drawn. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Oral reports, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, Your Honor. On behalf of the Master Sewer Committee, I'd like to make a following motion to approve the LTCP construction pay request number 41 from Cordy Lujan and Tubal O'Wayden Merson for a total amount of $234,073.94. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, we have a second by Alderman Heim. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consolo.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewiss.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cyber.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye. Motion carries. Alderman Musgrove, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear discussion? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We have no petitions this evening, we have no resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ordinance number 7726, 7727, 7728, 7729, 7730, 7731, and 7732. Come on. We have a motion by Alderman Silsby, who's the second? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded. Garrett just pointed out to me an F, so we're going to destroy it, maybe? We'll vote on F separately. Is there anything else? Any of you want to read as a group, or any of you want to vote on separately?
We'll vote on G separately.
F and G separately. So we can go A through E, read by title only, and we can vote on those as a group. Is that okay? All in favor of reading by title only and reading A through E as a group, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
A, zoning ordinance number 7726, case 55, November 13th, David Rhodes, Walking By Faith. B, zoning ordinance number 7727, case 56, November 13th, Specialty Distributing of Illinois. C, zoning ordinance number 7728, case 57, November 13th, Rural Ventures Enterprises Rural Storage. D, zoning ordinance number 7729, case 59, November 13th, Kingdom Life Worship Church. E, ordinance number 7730, Final Plan for Cottages at Cathedral Square.
Your Honor, motion to approve zoning number, ordinance number 7726, 7728, 29, 30.
We have a motion for that, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman White, do I hear a discussion? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We have no petitions this evening, we have no resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ordinance number 7726, 7727, 7728, 7729, 7730, 7731, and 7732. Come on. We have a motion by Alderman Silsby, who's the second? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded. Garrett just pointed out to me an F, so we're going to destroy it, maybe? We'll vote on F separately. Is there anything else? Any of you want to read as a group, or any of you want to vote on separately?
We'll vote on G separately.
F and G separately. So we can go A through E, read by title only, and we can vote on those as a group. Is that okay? All in favor of reading by title only and reading A through E as a group, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
A, zoning ordinance number 7726, case 55, November 13th, David Rhodes, Walking By Faith. B, zoning ordinance number 7727, case 56, November 13th, Specialty Distributing of Illinois. C, zoning ordinance number 7728, case 57, November 13th, Rural Ventures Enterprises Rural Storage. D, zoning ordinance number 7729, case 59, November 13th, Kingdom Life Worship Church. E, ordinance number 7730, Final Plan for Cottages at Cathedral Square.
Your Honor, motion to approve zoning number, ordinance number 7726, 7728, 29, 30.
We have a motion for that, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman White, do I hear a discussion? Roll call to approve those of A through E, ordinance as I just read.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consolo.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewiss.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cyber.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye. Motion carries. Coming along here, we got communications.
Yes, I'll go ahead. Hey, we're looking for a motion to approve a street ban permit for North Illinois' street entrance to the city for the Home Builders Association of Greater Southwestern Illinois to advertise their show to be held February 28th, March 1st and 2nd, 2014 at the Belclaire Fairgrounds.
So motion by Alderman, Consolo, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion on that first request? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Next, we're looking for a motion to approve the city hosting the January Bell Scott meeting at the Firehouse Number Four at 1125 South Illinois Street on Thursday, January 9th, 2014, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and to allow alcohol to be served at the event.
Motion by Alderman Silsby, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Ridgewiss, this time. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We have no petitions this evening, we have no resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ordinance number 7726, 7727, 7728, 7729, 7730, 7731, and 7732. Come on. We have a motion by Alderman Silsby, who's the second? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded. Garrett just pointed out to me an F, so we're going to destroy it, maybe? We'll vote on F separately. Is there anything else? Any of you want to read as a group, or any of you want to vote on separately?
We'll vote on G separately.
F and G separately. So we can go A through E, read by title only, and we can vote on those as a group. Is that okay? All in favor of reading by title only and reading A through E as a group, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
A, zoning ordinance number 7726, case 55, November 13th, David Rhodes, Walking By Faith. B, zoning ordinance number 7727, case 56, November 13th, Specialty Distributing of Illinois. C, zoning ordinance number 7728, case 57, November 13th, Rural Ventures Enterprises Rural Storage.[1650.33]
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Coming along here, we got Communications.
Guess I'll go ahead and A, we're looking for motion to approve a street ban permit for North Illinois Street entrance to the city for the Home Builders Association of Greater Southwestern Illinois to advertise their show to be held February twenty-eighth, March first and second, two thousand fourteen at the Bel Air Fairgrounds.
Motion by Alderman, Consula, second by Alderman, Schmidt, to approve F, which is ordinance number seventy-seven thirty-one, and please note the word should be changed to deleted, and then scratch out.
I'll send the corrected version.
We'll send the corrected version to Alderman. Okay? We have motion, we have a second. Am I confusing you?
The motion was on the last council meeting, so I considered the ordinance, but it's, you're deleting a no-mark zone rather than adding it, so that was a typo.
It's the last time we get the resolution, this time we get the ordinance.
Correct.
And there's just a typo in the ordinance.
Correct, it's deleting the zone.
We have motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consula.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewiss.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Coming along here, we got Communications.
Guess I'll go ahead and A, we're looking for motion to approve a street ban permit for North Illinois Street entrance to the city for the Home Builders Association of Greater Southwestern Illinois to advertise their show to be held February twenty-eighth, March first and second, two thousand fourteen at the Bel Air Fairgrounds.
Motion by Alderman, Consula, second by Alderman, Schmidt, to approve F, which is ordinance number seventy-seven thirty-one, and please note the word should be changed to deleted, and then scratch out.
I'll send the corrected version.
We'll send the corrected version to Alderman. Okay? We have motion, we have a second. Am I confusing you?
The motion was on the last council meeting, so I considered the ordinance, but it's, you're deleting a no-mark zone rather than adding it, so that was a typo.
It's the last time we get the resolution, this time we get the ordinance.
Correct.
And there's just a typo in the ordinance.
Correct, it's deleting the zone.
We have motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consula.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewiss.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries.
G, ordinance number seventy-seven thirty-two, the sewer rate increase.
Motion to approve ordinance number seven, seconded.
Motion by Alderman, Consula, second by Alderman, Schmidt, to approve F, which is ordinance number seventy-seven thirty-one, and please note the word should be changed to deleted, and then scratch out.
I'll send the corrected version.
We'll send the corrected version to Alderman. Okay? We have motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consula.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewiss.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Coming along here, we got Communications.
Guess I'll go ahead and A, we're looking for motion to approve a street ban permit for North Illinois Street entrance to the city for the Home Builders Association of Greater Southwestern Illinois to advertise their show to be held February twenty-eighth, March first and second, two thousand fourteen at the Bel Air Fairgrounds.
Motion by Alderman, Consula, second by Alderman, Schmidt, to approve F, which is ordinance number seventy-seven thirty-one, and please note the word should be changed to deleted, and then scratch out.
I'll send the corrected version.
We'll send the corrected version to Alderman. Okay? We have motion, we have a second. Am I confusing you?
The motion was on the last council meeting, so I considered the ordinance, but it's, you're deleting a no-mark zone rather than adding it, so that was a typo. But I also give the mayor an opportunity to sit and have a review of the ordinance. And there's just a typo in 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 the ordinance. And even if we had a choice, it would still be the right thing to do. We have federal laws through the Environmental Protection Agency, which is enforced upon us by the Illinois EPA, that tells us what we can do and cannot do in order to comply with the Clean Water Act. The city of Belleville, being an older community, is behind in keeping up these laws. This ordinance will fund the efforts that we are working on to solve these problems. A question has been raised of many citizens to me, well, what if we do nothing? Well, one, we are continuing to pollute the environment, we are in violation of EPA
During this terrible recession, nobody came forward and suggested that to me. Alderman Hayden.
Yes, Your Honor, and I totally respect my colleague from the ward three's position as well as all of them in large, because I grapple too, Your Honor, with looking at option one, option two, option three, but if look at them and the city treasurer can correct me if I'm wrong, basically, all three options, the initial first few years are pretty much the same. So they were going to be impacted in the short term in order to make this work, Your Honor, pretty much the same whether we chose option one, two, or three. The reason I sided with option three is stated before, you know, and we've also covered the issues as it relates to getting future funding, do we have a strong plan in effect as it relates to that, and looking at our grants and et cetera loans. The thing of it is, as I've said before, of the three options, this is the only option that I know that we will less likely have to go back to the well and ask for more money down the road, and nobody here can pledge or promise anything, but if things do go well, it's actually inconceivable that as we get into this thing, if we are taxing too much, I would much rather say, you know, we're taxing too much, but we can cut it and give money back than have to go back to the well and ask for money.
That certainly is true. But we also know, as I said, this is dealing with the combined sewer overflows. This doesn't even deal with...
The combined sewer overflow, which is the long-term control plan, that was already committed to. Now we have entered into another commitment because of being forced of sanitary sewer, SSO, and that dropped another fifteen million dollars' worth of projects. It was either do it with some window of time or be forced to do it, as Alderman Hayden said, you would be subject to fine, meeting this council, and a thousand dollars is the minimum. They've also had in some of the consent decree up to ten thousand dollars they've fined. So that's a widespread...
By doing this, we're not under a consent decree.
Correct.
We're not, we're not limiting other opportunities that the city develop. It's, don't get me wrong, folks, this is, this is very serious, and I only wished that the city councils of thirty years ago or more or somewhere between there would have properly maybe better done the pensions, because we wouldn't be paying and be dealing with the pension situation that we're dealing with right now that finally went into law to properly fund the pensions in ninety-eight. And, you know, that was a tough pill to swallow as a new member of this council, and we had to raise the levy thirty-two percent. We had no choice, and there were some who voted against it, and it was easy to say, I voted against it, but what's the alternative? And I think that's the question here tonight. Who else didn't make a comment yet that wants to? We need to call for the roll call vote.
Heiser.
Aye.
Consolo.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood's.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsman.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Yeah, I've had it, and thank you for the hard work on this particular argument. Okay, we move over to unfinished business. Yes, ma'am.
Jamie, so one of my questions, I'm sorry, so I was interested about that. But I also give it on, I'm really concerned and have not to be notified by anyone about when budget meetings are, when departments are coming in to call.
Jamie, did we send a memo out?
Yeah, all the departments have their budget packages.
Yeah, but did we send a memo out to the ordinance, to the...
No, I haven't even started giving budget information back yet.
Yeah, but right now, the first phase is Jamie always sends out in December or late November, early December, the budget packets to each department head. They start to work on their budgets and then come back to Jamie and I.
They're back by Christmas.
By Christmas.
Okay, and so then, are appointments set with you and each department head?
The mayor and I sit with each department head to go with budgets.
Okay, and are all of them welcome at those meetings?
We're gonna go through that round with staff, and then we will present to you the draft of the budget that they're requesting that Jamie and I are proposing with the staff, and then you will have time to review it, and if then, at that time, some of you have particular questions for a particular department head, you will be able to meet with Jamie and I or Jamie and the department head and review of order.
So you do not accept input from council?
We are not going to go through, hold each department head's hand in the process. We've been very successful. We have professional people who know the departments. As soon as we get the budgets moving along, you will get those drafts like you have every year.
But you have promised multiple lines of input.
No.
I'm just saying.
Jamie has told you, has told you in the past. Jamie?
The council receives drafts two months in advance of the passage of the budget.
And I think last year she had three people ask just a couple of questions.
Right.
So we have never said no, and if you have a particular department that you really think you want, you have multiple questions, we will call that department. If we get over four aldermen, we're violating the Open Meetings Act.
Aye.
We're not gonna make these department heads squirm into a public meeting with everybody there as they go through line by line with Jamie and I and other staff members, the budget. Now, we will get the budget presented and worked through like we have every year since I've been on this council for sixteen years now. We will work it through with our professional staff members who know their budgets and who know their departments, who know their jobs and do it day in and day out. We will prepare them, and then we will sit down, and you will get copies of them, and then if you have specific questions, we will more, take all the time in the world you need to go over with Jamie, I, our, the department heads, et cetera, on the specific questions.
So council has no right to set final on these? All we get is a finished product, we can edit.
If you have, well, you're gonna be able to edit it. If you have right now some suggestions for some departments, I would suggest that you email to Jamie and those departments what your initial suggestions are and help let in their, in their part of developing their budget, let them know if you have something from the very beginning that you want to make sure this year that's in their, in their consideration as they move it forward. Then, after we get the budget, assemble the draft, and we go to the first finance meeting with that, you'll have the opportunity again to express yourself and raise your concerns. And then, there's a public hearing or public meetings.
Yeah, it's two months' worth of time.
Two months' worth of time.
To cut concerns, edit changes, set priorities, whatever. Nothing is final until April. Everything's changed.
This is not a hidden procedure, but the staff needs to be able to go through with Jamie and work on their budget, make it, because they live it, and they eat and sleep these budgets, and they do a good job. We've done a good job. We made it through the whole recession, and we stayed in the black, and we didn't have, we cut some people, yes, and we made some tough decisions, but we didn't cut any emergency service people, and we continue to do, I think, really well by the taxpayers. That process is gonna be open, and you'll have, you have opportu, for example, if you have something right now for Chief Clay, shoot him an email or give him a call and tell him that, any of the other department heads, but they're gonna have the right, like they always have, to go through their budget first, see the packet, start working on it, and then when we get the first draft, we'll get it to the alderman. You'll get it, the first draft would be sometime in January?
Usually by the end of January, first quarter.
And then we'll have all of it.
Will you please notify the aldermen of when the department heads are leaving the planning to leave?
No.
And require us?
No, because if I do that, and all of a sudden more than four people show up, I'm in violation of the...
If you had not interrupted me, I would have said, you can require us to make reservations. If more than four show up, we will schedule an open meeting, but we are talking about public money. The public has a right to the process also. And frankly, I think you're skating our legal ice here, denying us the right to participate.
You know, this has been done, and you've had opportunities every year to raise questions. As Jamie just said...
And I ask you every year to change the process, and you have to do it.
Alderman Holt, you're not a department head, and you're not a CPA. Once the budget...
We're the ones who tell you how to cut the pie. Once we tell you how to cut the pie, each department head decides with their slides what they do with it. They don't come to us and say, this is how we're doing it. Does the attorney Jamie ask, answer your question?
What is the question?
Can I have the right to put this in?
Well, as far as the, it depends on the level of participation. I mean, you can, you can make council rules that define your participation. I'd have to go back and look at your budgeting practice right now as far as what's outlined in the, in your city council rules, but it sounds like the practice is consistent with what governmental entities all across the state, local governmental bodies generally have their administration, prepare a draft, and then provide, seek feedback, and you provide input, and then you have a public debate at a city council meeting concerning it.
Our finance meeting first.
Yeah, I mean, it goes through the process, but as far as, as far as creating, the city council creating the initial draft of a budget, I would, I would say that that's not commonplace. That's why you have a finance director.
Well, it's just like the principals of a school. The principals, they get school board members and principals here, the school board doesn't come in and tell the principal with the finance staff how to draft their budget the first round. They get, am I correct?
Correct.
I mean, it's, you've gotta trust these professionals. We're, you know, we're hiring people with master's degrees in, you know, in administration, et cetera, and they know, Chief Clay knows the police department. He knows what he needs.
I, I understand that, and I have the authority to set that on time. Yes, I expect them to do the best they can for their department. It is not their job to look at the big picture. It is our job to...
And you have, you have many opportunities to continue to have input on the legal issues, and that will be the same. Alderman Hayden next.
Your Honor, each, each one of these department heads basically are involved and serve on a committee. Now, I see no reason why, as part of the committee process, that we can't add to the agenda, you know, discussion of the budgets as it relates to those department heads in those committees, and have a discussion within those committees, whether it be health and housing, whether it be police and fire, and set some time, Your Honor, at those various committees that are already advertised for the public to know to be there, it's on the agenda, and have some open dialogue between the city council members that are the representatives of the people. That is all that's being asked here, Your Honor.
We can do that, I believe. I believe that's a possibility, put on the agenda in January for all the committee meetings. If there are budgetary requests or comments or suggestions, we can do that.
You know, and...
But we're not, what I'm saying is, to think that all sixteen aldermen are gonna come in and sit down with Chief Clay and Jamie and I and go through their budget line by line, oh...
I don't, I don't think that that's, that's what we're looking for. I think what's being...
Well, I think that's what Alderman Holt's asking.
I'd be very happy with Alderman Hayden's company.
You know, when we, when we sit down and have the department heads put the key things that are, that they're looking for in their budget, the key things that are, you know, that are going up three, four, five percent, it's not only, Your Honor, a approval process, which I understand, the department heads are gonna put their budgets together, you know, but the executive branch forwards this act to the city council, which is the legislative branch. Legislative branch has the approval of a budget.
I never did, I never have said that wasn't the case.
And we need, if anything, Your Honor, besides getting more public dialogue for the public to come and see, and hopefully, as, as we, I got your memo here, which, you know, it looks like we're gonna be very close to, to going live with Charter and streaming. I appreciate that.
We called them again.
You know, we can, we can put these things out there for the public to see, and if we earbarred in that meeting thirty, forty minutes of dialogue to discuss this, we've got multiple, you gotta remember, Your Honor, we, since twenty-eleven now, ten of the sixteen aldermen are new, you know, so, you know, there's a lot of things that everybody needs to understand here about the public budgeting process.
I don't have a problem putting on the agendas, in the January agendas, to have a line item on the agendas, department heads in your committees, for the opportunity to talk about any major changes in your proposed budget, seek input if any of you have it, but that, in a sense, you know, that's fine.
I, I, and I...
That's fine. But to sit down, to sit down, you know, I don't think, and I served as an alderman for almost eight years, I don't think it was my duty to sit down and tell the fire department how much hoses they need, and how much, how many breathing apparatus have to be checked this year, how many rounds of ammunition, those things that they have not, a lot of this budget, as you know, folks, is already set. We, you know, health insurance is gonna be so much money, work miss cop's gonna be so much money. We know for a fact that gasoline, you know, has its spikes up tremendously. We know the average of what we have to afford for fuel.
You're a hundred percent...
So, you know, there's not a whole lot of discretionary things.
Eighty-five percent of the budget is finite, but, but I'm not here to tell the chief how much ammo he needs or how much fire hose he needs, but it is my job, Your Honor, if it comes down to the fact that we can only buy so much hose or only so much ammo, I'm one of the sixteen corporate members that are elected by the people to say, which is more that we're gonna buy. That is our job.
Let, let, let our city attorney read this.
Your ordinance three point one-two regarding budget system, the city council in Part A adopted Sections five slash eight dash two dash nine point one, through and including Section five slash eight dash two dash nine point one zero of the municipal code, which is, is the provision where you, the mayor appoints a budget officer, and then in Section B, you identify the director of finance as the budget officer. Essentially, what those sections, without going into great detail, contemplate is that your appointed budget officer compiles a budget for consideration and approval by the city council. So I think that's...
If I'm not mistaken, that was, I think that was adopted when you were the council, Alderman Hayden.
And I'm not, I'm not disputing that, Your Honor, and I'm not disputing that, Mr. City Attorney, but, you know, likewise, you know, the President of the United States Budget Officer hands a budget over to the Congress, and I don't think they all just sit there and say, okay, that's it.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that. I was just responding to an earlier question of mine.
I think we need to have more dialogue, and that's all we're doing, and the mayor's committed to allow us to do that in the various committees.
I think that's a discussion I don't have any problem. Alderman Consolo.
I feel that we should not come into a room with a blank sheet of paper and sit down and expect a department head to say exactly what he wants. What should happen, and what is the professional thing, is for the department head to work with administration and come up with a proposed budget. We need something to work with. We can't work with a blank sheet of paper. They have to have a proposed budget. Now, sometimes, in coming up with a proposed budget, I'm sure the mayor's and Jamie are going to say, well, that's not affordable this year. Can we plan on it next year? I mean, they go through a lot of that, but we shouldn't be, the initial, the initial discussion should be with administration. That's their job. That's the job description.
And believe me, when we sit down with the department heads, we have to tell them, you know, look, there's gonna have to be, this is not probably gonna work this year with your request. We're gonna, you know, I told you before, you know, the hardest thing about being mayor or being the chief executive officer of a city of this size is to maintain balance. And every ward and every department head wants their fair share of resources to do their job. Every ward wants their share of projects. Every department head wants as much as they can get to do the best they can. My job and Jamie's job, and ultimately, your final approval after you, after you review it, is to make sure there's balance and that it all makes sense. You're gonna have plenty of opportunities to look at the balance and give input, but it is their job to put this together and make recommendations, because they are the professionals that know these departments, and they live these budgets three hundred sixty-five days in a year. So we will put it on the agendas for...
It's likely, and I concur with Mr. Consolo, but I also do believe that we, we as elected officials, you see what those things are being cut by the administration, just so we are aware of what's going on. Under, on unfinished business, Your Honor, did we, I gave you the update on the, from the last meeting on, we may go live with the table and Charter. Did we get an update on the top string? You were gonna look into that.
We have not heard any more, we have not heard any more approval. We have not heard any final denial.
I, then I'll state right now, let's start the process, I'm gonna be requesting to the chief that we explore, we look into putting with the excess sales tax, at least, both police officers on the street, and that's gonna be my, pretty much my main request. Another question, at the last meeting, we voted on the temporary ordinances to be drawn up, Your Honor, for Union and State Street. I didn't see them in this package. Do we know what happened to them?
It might have been an oversight. I wrote the executive order. The council did do it. I'll have to check them out immediately. There's some, some of the things I'm tied for the meetings here, I'm making the play out.
I understand.
That's just one. I'll just need to have another person here to...
Put up the no trucks on, on State and Union.
Well, Tim was working on that with the speed limit. Now, the speed monitor is probably gonna come down for a little bit. Battery's got some issues with the...
No, it's just gotta be recharged.
Should be recharged.
It's been over there for a while, so we gotta recharge it, get it recharged and put it back over there. I drove through there a couple days ago, I'm looking, and I, I don't know if they, I did not see the no trucks.
No, that one's still, we need, we need to still deal with that.
We're gonna drop the speed down to twenty.
That was passed, so that has to be, but I had to be ten days ago to post it. Okay. Okay, Alderman Holt.
Okay, another issue is the website. Do we not have a designated staff person?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
So we're not hitting agendas on there? We are...
Well, the agendas, the agendas are supposed to...
That's a total story. Exactly. I can apologize for that, for sure. I didn't personally do it myself, which I could have, if I was there Wednesday. Part of my assistant city clerk, Kathy, was not, she was off home Wednesday, and so, you know, that, that is why the city council's agenda was not out there. It's part of her job, so there are unique jobs.
Committee meetings that have not been on there. Is it, is it your assistant clerk?
No, that's a different.
I'm like Sharon's job.
The committee meetings, no, it's not Sharon's job, it's Sharon's job. And, and she's doing it, but they have to be approved, and, you know, we're not putting up unapproved minutes, and they're, they have to be, get back to them.
Not yet, it's agendas.
Agendas should be getting there, and I have to look at the girls' contract, and I don't know, department heads, are your staff putting on the agendas? They're putting them on. It is part of their, they're putting the agendas on.
Okay, that's not Sharon.
That's not Sharon's job yet. Yeah.
Just for clarification purpose, Section two point oh-two B of the Open Meetings Act law contemplates posting an agenda if you, if you have a website. It does qualify at the last, the last sentence of, of Section two point oh-two B says, quote, "The failure of a public body to post on his website notice of any meeting or the agenda of any meeting shall not invalidate any meeting or any actions taken at a meeting." So I just wanted to qualify for the public that, that really what controls the forty-eight hour validity standpoint is the posting.
Is there not a proportional state that if you have a person who is designated...
If you have a full-time staff member, you're spoken, it contemplates posting, but then...
That's why I started my wish the way I did.
Correct, but then it goes back, and it does say that, that the failure to do so, and I don't know if it, I'm not aware of the failure, but if there was a failure, it does not invalidate any actions.
Because we're gonna have to talk, because Jim Schneider knows for a fact that, and Garrett, I mean, Dallas just alluded to it, in many of the clerical staff's contracts and their job descriptions, it's part of their, even though we have a web person, she's listening to all the reports, complaints that come in, she's following up, she's, she's dealing with many things with the web every day. There's constantly moving parts, but when it comes to posting these agendas, I believe, Jim, it's in their individual job descriptions, that they have to do that. And now, there's still a few things, and as Dallas just told you, he's got a relatively new assistant city clerk, there was a glitch, and also, I think you got a, one of, somebody got an email today, and, and I think Mr. Hager, you probably got an apology, there was a mess up at the sewage treatment plant, because when I called out it this morning, the young lady said right away, I made a mistake. Now, we just happen to have a couple mistakes in this particular holiday week, weekend, but we did check up on them right away, and they're gonna be corrected, and they should have been. But the girls in the individual office, and I say girls, the people, it could be men, whoever are the office managers or whoever is designated in their job descriptions, they have to put those changes, those, post those, post those agendas on the websites.
Okay, and Mr. Attorney, does that make any difference? On, on, this is a, will it be different? I mean, all of it?
No, no, what I'm saying is, while the, while the Open Meetings Act and that section does contemplate posting it on an agenda or a meeting notice on your website, if you have a full-time person maintaining the website, it does go on to qualify that the failure to do so, if by mistake or any reason, does not invalidate any actions taken at the meeting. So it's basically, it's a, it's a requirement without a consequence. Just advising everybody of what the law requires.
Okay. Do I take it we've been all through unfinished and this one is a new business? Motor field claims, the amount of thirty thousand, forty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Schmidt.
Do we have any discussion on the motor field claims? Roll call.
Heiser.
Aye.
Consolo.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood's.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsman.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time I'd ask for a motion to approve the, approve and release the executive session minutes dated February twenty-first, two thousand twelve, August twentieth, two thousand twelve, March fourth, two thousand thirteen, February nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, March fourth, two thousand thirteen, and March eighteen, two thousand thirteen.
Close.
Motion by Alderman Seibert. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Anthony. Do I hear discussion? All in favor of approving and releasing those executive session minutes as reviewed? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Ask for a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Motion by Hayden, second by Schmidt. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Good evening.
Okay. What? Sorry. Yeah.
That was right. 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 That was right.